First order of business, like to recognize Pastor TC Johnson for the opening invocation. Everyone who wishes to do so, please rise at this time.
Let us pray. Oh Lord our God, how excellent is thy name in all the earth, at all times. And God, we come to say thank you, thank you for the peace that we enjoy, the liberty that we enjoy in the city, in the state, and in the nation. We pray, Father, for those who are suffering under oppression around the world. We pray especially for Africa and the Ebola conflict. God, you're not a doctor, you're a healer, and we ask for your healing power in this area. And now, God, to this area, this institution of governance where which we are assembled. We pray for your spirit, for your guidance, for truth, for transparency, and we do it all in the name of Jesus the Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you Reverend Johnson, and also thank you Councilman Osheski. Next on the agenda will be the approval of minutes. We have before us the regular meeting minutes, the council meeting that were held September 25th. Without objection from the council, those meetings will stand approved. Next on the agenda is special recognition, and we're going to be turning the floor over to Mayor Battle. I believe we are trying to track down a microphone.
Just claim we'll do our awards and presentations from down here today. Called Making Do. If we could have Sarah Crocker come over with Caffey. Our Young Citizen of the Month is to be named tonight, and Sarah, you want to bring everybody over with you?
Tonight, it's my pleasure, can everyone hear me? Okay. It's my pleasure to present the Young Citizen of the Month Award to Emily Lepidus. And fortunately, I was going to say unfortunately, but fortunately, she's at school at Alabama, which is wonderful. So her father is here, Mike Lepidus, to accept her awards and honors. Emily was actually picked while she was still in high school. So, yeah, she was, and we skipped the summer months for awards. So, and I hope that everybody knows about the Caffey Star 99.1 Young Citizen of the Month program, and will let everybody know because it's a wonderful thing to be nominated and also awarded the award. The reason Emily was nominated is because she greets everyone, she meets with a huge smile and friendly greeting. She puts everyone at ease and helps those she meets. She's helpful, patient, generous, and always encouraging her peers to do their best. Emily participated in forming the BBYO chapter in Huntsville, which required extensive traveling and learning. She participated in many clubs and activities at Huntsville High School, and also helped at Manahouse, Girls Club, the Children's Advocacy Center, and at Camp Barney. She was a physical trainer for the Huntsville High School football team, taking outside classes in physical training while a student at Huntsville High School. She also worked the concession stands at the VBC during hockey season. Emily first signed up to participate as a volunteer when she was in the third grade. She awarded, she awarded the prizes at different fundraisers rather than trying to win them. Emily has that special courage to call on others to help her when a group needs more hands, and when she asks, everybody shows up. Some of Emily's awards were that she was the Rocket City BBYO president in 2014. She was Huntsville High School class officer for four years, and she got a scholarship to the University of Alabama. And we're very proud to call her our Young Citizen of the Month. I have a certificate for you to give to her, and it says, "Caffey Star 99.1," and the Human Relations Commission of the City of Huntsville is proud to honor Emily Lepidus as the Caffey Star 99.1 Young Citizen of the Month. And it's signed by Mayor Battle, the Multicultural Office, DynCorp, Human Relations Commission, Caffey, and Star 99.1.
We also have for you a coin from the city, and we make the coins for the city to congratulate people who have done great things for the city and who have had a great presence on the city. And we want to thank Emily for that. Please pass along our thanks to her.
All right, and Mr. President, we also would like to call on Chief McFarland to come down. This October is Fire Prevention Month, and we have a resolution here. It has 12 whereas's and one therefore on it, so we will save you the whereas's, but the therefore is that we want to name October Fire Prevention Month for the City of Huntsville. And there are some special things that we should do to name it Fire Prevention Month. And Chief McFarland?
Thank you, Mayor. I really appreciate you recognizing this officially, so we can all, if nothing else, we can talk about it. Huntsville is a fire-safe city. We want to keep it that way, and we want this to be, this week to start the month and be a fire-safe year. And I asked our Fire Marshal, Fire Marshal Dan Wilkson, to tell you a little more about maybe some plans that would help us to do that.
Thank you, Chief. First of all, I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for their support. Without them, we couldn't do the job that we do here in Huntsville. The, early this year, the state fire marshal recognized that the state of Alabama had a record number of fatalities already going into the third month of the year. So he got together with the Alabama Fire Chiefs, and they created a statewide program that's called Turn Your Attention to Fire Prevention. And we're in support of that program, and we're trying to get the message out to, and not only statewide, but to our citizens here in Huntsville. A lot of times, when you see a fire injury or fatality on the news, it brings a lot of attention to the fires that we have in our city. But we'd like to get ahead of that and bring attention to fire prevention to try to avoid some of those. Over the last five years, we've averaged three fire fatalities in Huntsville. But this year, as of today, we've only had one this year. So hopefully, we can prevent that and keep it to one by the end of the year and continuing into next year. But one of the things that I wanted to speak about, and what we're really trying to educate people about during Fire Prevention Month, is make sure you have a work and smoke detector in your home. And even if it works when you test it, if it's 15 years old, you need to replace it. The sensors and those things lose sensitivity over time, and you should place it every 15 years. So make sure you have a work and smoke detector. Make sure you have an escape plan. A lot of people don't realize that in a fire, you breathe carbon monoxide, and it's easy to get you disoriented. You know, you're familiar with your house, but once you're under the effects of carbon monoxide, you get confused. So if you don't practice your escape plan, then it's harder for you to be able to escape during that fire. The leading cause of fires in the country, and also in our city, is cooking fires. Anytime you're cooking with grease, always stay where you can watch it. People don't realize grease turns into a flammable vapor, and it can ignite just by the heat of the pan. So we want to make people aware of that. And obviously, with the weather becoming colder, we don't like it when people use space heaters, but we realize that some people have to use them. Just make sure you follow the manufacturer recommendation when you use them, and use them safely. So, but I do want to thank the mayor and the city council for recognizing this month as Fire Prevention Month. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Battle. Next on the agenda, under council resolutions, there is for adoption, a resolution author congratulating Alabama A&amp;M University on their 23rd Athletic Hall of Fame induction ceremony and banquet, which will be held at the Ernest Knight Reception Center on the Alabama A&amp;M campus on October the 10th at 7:00 PM. This is being sponsored by Councilman Showers. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Culver, seconded by Councilman Osheski. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion has been approved. No other special recognitions? Under announcements on the agenda, items 15A, 15(c), and item 16A1 have been deleted from the agenda for tonight. Again, 15A, (c), and 16A1 are being deleted. There is no business under outside legal representation. Next, public hearings to be set. There's a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning property lying on the south side of Taylor Road and south of Terry Drake Road from Residence 2 District and Residence 2B District to Residence 2A District. The resolution is to set the hearing for November the 20th at the regular council meeting. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Culver, seconded by Councilman Osheski. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion has been approved. Next is a resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning property lying on the north side of Governor's Drive and on the south side of St. Clair Avenue from Medical District to General Business C3 District. The recommendation is to set this for the November 20th regular council meeting. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Osheski, excuse me, by, motion by, the motion was made by Councilman Culver, seconded by Councilman Osheski. Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion has been approved. Next, we have communications from the public. Ms. Stamper, have we gotten the list yet? Under the guidelines of public comment, you have up to three minutes to speak, and the timekeeper, Mr. Haygood, will keep track. First up is Chris Horn, 3305 Barky Avenue, Huntsville 35810, Neighborhood Issues. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. How are you? How was the board? My speech this morning is, this afternoon, rather, is on a couple of issues. One, I'm a Little League football coach at Northern Football. I've got nine and 10-year-olds. I invite you to come see our football games on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Would like to be able to get a little bit more input from our councilman, but since he's not here, I guess we can speak to Mr. Hamilton about how we may be able to get more support on our football fields. We're having a real problem with sharing that field with lacrosse, and it's tearing up the fields in the middle of the field, and we were promised that it would not be used this year, and all of a sudden, we're going through the same thing. The congestion there considered, you know, pretty much a hazard, when there's a lot of parking there as well. And we just want to get a better communication between our Board of Directors and the city in regards to how we can make that better. Secondly, I want to be able to discuss, I want to point my attention to Mr. Showers. We've got some issues in our neighborhood that are just very, very specific. It's just crime. It's just that simple. On Wednesday, we had someone that get raped at a washer mat in the middle of the daytime. And certainly, we want to be able to work with Mr. Hamilton and the police chief, and anyone else who will listen, of how we can start to look at our community from a perspective of beating down this crime issue that we have. The last issue is still, some of the issues that we have in regards to getting some great or better correspondence as it relates to our school board. One, the major things that's starting to happen, there's a lot of momentum going right now, so that you are aware that the community is starting to mobilize and to discuss where they put their tax dollars. I said it two or three months ago, if we don't get more communication, or better communication, or loud communication, that what the community's going to start doing is spending their dollars outside of the community until there's a response. And that economic impact is going to impact our treasury. Specifically, what am I speaking of? Well, last week, there was an issue, and your grand body allows us to speak. We get three minutes, and we get that three minutes clearly. Well, we found out last week at the school board meeting that they made a decision that if you don't live in the city of Huntsville, you can't even take the microphone and speak. And I found that to be a little bit of silencing dissent, and also, they did it in terms of time. But I would like for our city attorney, at very least, or someone, to have a conversation with their folks as to why the people from, who may live on, who may live outside the city, aren't able to speak. Whether that's something that, to me, we need to discuss. I mean, we've had discussions here before about people who are spending their tax dollars here, and the mayor, when he talked about expanding the roads, how that was important to expand them to the county, because we had people going back and forth, working here, and lots of people who work here and put money in our treasury for our schools, and then we're telling them they can't speak at those meetings. I think that's something that may be outside of your purview, but I would like for us to start asking that question. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next is Casey Brown, 199 Millan Road. I'm sure I can make out the name of your street.
Mimi Lane. Mimi Lane. I told myself after last time I came here, I was never going to come back, because obviously, my words just hit a brick wall. But David Blair made a statement about the people of Northwest Huntsville, and said that they're just rock throwers with no solutions. The people of Northwest Huntsville have been shut out of every major conversation with the school board. In fact, everyone's been shut out of every major, every major conversation with the school board. Any major decision they've made has been behind closed doors. The decision, and anytime you ask for accountability, all you get is hearsay. The decision to shut down Johnson in the school name, oh, a citizens group came to us. Really? Where's the minutes from that meeting? Oh, we don't have any minutes. The Johnson family wanted the name retired. Oh, really? I talked to every one of them. That's a lie. The NSA called and says, "We need to start monitoring our students." Let's throw $2 million bucks at that. Where's the minutes from that meeting? Wasn't done in public? Who authorized that? Then we go to a board meeting, they violate their own naming policy to change the school name, they have the seats full before we get there. I came here to talk about that last time, got the longest non-answer in history. It's getting very, very apparent that some people aren't considered citizens in this city. I was born in Huntsville Hospital. I went to Calvary Hills, Highlands, Ed White, and Johnson. Names like J.O. Johnson, S.R. Butler, Milton Frank, these names mean something to me. I am from here. It is part of my heritage. And to have a whole section of the city shut out, I mean, nothing is more painful than to be dismissed. And to be dismissive to someone is the ultimate disrespect. We had a church full of 2,000 people speak to Mayor Battle and the school board, and prayed to be acknowledged, ignored. We had 500 people in these streets marching to be heard, ignored. 1,700 people on a petition, ignored. And then you call people rock throwers? If that is not a sheer sign of arrogance and ignorance from David Blair, furthermore, he tipped off their whole plan to start out with in the Challen Stevens article, when he said the first he heard a change in the school name was from a plan from J.R. Brooks and Wardensky himself. So who is pulling the strings here if the citizens have no say? When you remove a citizen's ability to shape their own community, that in itself is a crime. I'm not interested in response, because I don't respect anything y'all have to say.
Next is Edgar Fallon, and she's not here?
I'm here.
Oh, good. If you could, we need your address for the record, please.
Edra Fallon, 203 Hawkscrest Circle, Madison, Alabama. And although I have a Madison address, I'm in that part that is annexed into Huntsville, and I'm actual, actually a constituent of Mr. Culver's. And so I think they kind of made that rule at the school board for me too, but they didn't know that I actually live in Huntsville. I'm here tonight because, I think you know why I'm here, because I talk about it all the time. The city, the school system has purchased land and is building school, a school on property that is located less than half a mile from an active rock quarry. The city and the school board have not done the adequate testing for that facility. They are not in compliance with EPA guidelines. There has not been a health risk assessment. And, I mean, you're just going on like you're hurting me, but you're not. Because like you, none of my children will ever attend that school. So, in the end, I will be fine. And, but the risk that you are posing to future generations of Huntsville children, that's what you're going to have to live with. And I guess that's what you're going to have to live with when you pray to God at the beginning of these meetings. So you think about those children, future generations, and if you, I know for a fact that you would not want your children to attend a school under those circumstances. Thank you.
Is Danny Shay from Natural Resources here tonight? Danny, you've heard your concerns. I don't know how familiar you are with that issue, but is there any information you could provide now, or would you need to research and contact Ms. Fallon later?
I really don't understand the remark about not being in accordance with EPA guidelines.
Okay. Can the two of y'all go out in the back and talk and let her explain specifically what her concerns are, and then can you follow up with her?
I don't have anything to say.
Okay.
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. Ms. Fallon, he's willing to go out in the back and find out? Next, Reggie Hill, 3815 Starbridge Drive. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. That's 3813 Starbridge Drive. Presiding Officer Clean, members of the council, administrators of the city, Mayor Battle, citizens, good evening. First, I want to commend our mayor for beginning with a healthy Huntsville, as well as with his trip to Japan. These are some of the initiatives that we need to utilize to be able to move forward as a people. Now, my concern, however, is the mental health stability of our city, our interaction with the people right here in our own neighborhood. We are able to create these relationships with those individuals who may be overseas, but what are we doing right here to make this actually one Huntsville? I believe that over the past few weeks, we've watched as our ideological rhetorics have forced a face-off between North and South Huntsville, whereas those individuals in the middle have kind of played in a neutral line, not necessarily moving from one issue that is relevant to making change, but rather sitting back and allowing the people to do that own justice. My issue here is this. We are on the brink. We are on the verge of all-out civil war again. We had an incident this week, this week alone, where someone's healthy mindset was deprived so much that they were willing to attack the Huntsville Police Department on their own grounds. So that means that we have an individual who has gone so far in something dealing with their life, that they are willing to take their life and put it in the jeopardy of what could happen on that premises. Now, this is the thing that I want to say to our multicultural division, as well as those people in the planning arena, as well as all of our councilmen who represent our various communities. If we are not willing to go and find out the mindsets of individuals, as well as to see how these circumstances are created, we're not going to be able to form that one Huntsville. We've seen over the years through population steering, through scrutiny through the school system, where certain communities have been isolated, whether it be economically, whether it be through the curriculum, whether it be through the business development, whether it be through infrastructure, whatever the case may be, we've seen certain areas of the community simply dwindle. And why is that as well? I can't put all the blame here, because we don't have enough movement with the people. So for all those that are listening and that are watching, my call is for the people. My call is for us to reorganize. My call is for us to get re-energized in the motion of moving forward down here. Because as long as we have five, and six, and seven, and eight people in front of buildings having a rebuttal, then they get to go on with their jobs. But when we have 20-plus people, 40-plus people, 100-plus people, thousand-plus people, then we get to recognize that maybe they're not just coming down here to attack us. Maybe there's an actual issue. This is not an antagonistic approach. It is not to say that we are hatred, or showing hatred towards you. May I have an extra minute, please?
Yeah. If there's no objection, please do.
Thank you. It is not to say that we're coming here to express levels and means of hatred, it's to say we are not recognized. We are not being able to express what is truly going on to us. Our voices are not being heard. Our tax-paying money is the same as anyone else in any other part of the city. A lot of the reason why things happen because of ignorance, and ignorance is not stupidity. So let's not get that confused. That means we just don't know. People on the south side may not understand what it is on the north side, simply because they just don't know. But if we're willing to go to the table, that's something we expect from that representation. I'm willing to go to the table. Next week, I'm sending information to Ms. Pearlie on how we can do community outreach. Let's bridge this gap. Instead of us continuously fighting and bickering amongst each other, let's see what we can do to really make this one Huntsville. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next is Isaiah Ash, 1617 Brook Hollow Circle. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, sir. It's good to be with you tonight. Verily, I seldom come here tonight unless I have a very important issue on my heart. My concern tonight is, as a retiree from the Health Department, I read about the city council and the mayor cut the budget of $2,000, $200,000. Now, I started at the Health Department almost 40 years ago, where we had only 16 employees in environmental health. Now, and we used to do the inspections once a month. Now, today, the inspectors do it between three to six months, and they have less than what we had when we started off 40 years ago. So my concern is, we need to replace that money. When we hear about the outbreaks that are taking place across the country, and at least around the world, Ebola, and we had a measly, measly cases increases in this country, over 500 cases, and the Health Department has to deal with that. We had salmonella outbreak in Alabama, eight-nine cases, and we got to deal with that. We got dystere cases in California, and we also have, let's see, what else I got down here? Salmonella E. coli break in Kentucky. So we have, this country is out for several outbreaks, and we don't put the money back into public health. Now, when I was inspector, we had only three outbreaks, foodborne outbreaks, when I was there. Thank God, we don't have it right now, but when I, since I retired, and when I look at the food services in Madison County, Huntsville Madison County, I see the potentials there. You don't see it until after you go. But now, we are in for something if we have some outbreaks. So we need to put the money back into public health. The federal government took it out, and that's why we have Ebola. The city is taking the money out of the local Health Department, and we're going to have potential problems. So put the money back there. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor Battle, would you like to respond?
And Mr. Ash, that was the county, Madison County, that took the $200,000 away from...
Well, I apologize. I'm sorry. I got the word that the, I know the city was always up to par in helping the Health Department, but I had, I got misinformation. They told me that the city of Huntsville, and the mayor did all this. I said, "I can't believe that."
I just remember those days you came down and inspected my restaurant, and we leveled the...
I apologize. I need to go before the council, I mean, the commission, because they always been a problem, because when somebody rubs their feathers, they cut the Health Department. I remember those days, where we have operation and all that stuff. But I go through the county, I mean, the county commission. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Next, we have Jackie, Jackie Reed, I believe it is, Bob Wallace Avenue. Good evening, Jackie.
You don't know my name by now? Hello. Good evening. How are y'all? That old song, "If you don't know me by now," I'll write another song. Thank you.
Ms. Reed, before you ask, let me say I'll certainly support you having an extra minute.
It's okay. I want to thanks for allowing input. I want to thanks for allowing input, and I may be the one who gave the misinformation, but I went to the County Commission yesterday, and they didn't have a meeting. All the boys was out. I said, I didn't know they were on school vacation, but I guess they were. But anyway, I was told about the two-hundred thousand dollars that was cut. Also, they're gonna move the tax assessor's office to the fifth floor and put the judge's office on the main floor. So every one of you go to the County Commission meeting at the next twenty-second and take them on. They need some of what we get up here on this place. Appreciate it. I want to thank, uh, whoever cleaned up Holmes Avenue. It's so nice when I go down through there, it makes me happy, happy, happy. Um, Council Osheski, I sure will miss you. You got one more busy up here with us, and I'm gonna miss you. You've been good to me, and I appreciate that. And you didn't throw me out of my district, I will never forget that. That meant a lot to me. Mayor, I want to thank you for recognizing the city employees. They do do a good job. I wish you had given more than a one percent raise, that would make me happy. And the citizens, all of you, need to know who is your councilperson. I get all these complaints, I'm not in the complaint department, Mayor Battle didn't ever hire me for that yet, but I get all the complaints, you don't know who your councilperson is. Call them. If they don't answer your questions and help you, bring it back to me, and I promise you, I will find out why they're not doing their job. They get paid up there to do that job. So make them do their job. I got fourteen losses in an election, but I'm the winner, that's the way I look at it. I wa- I want to bring up something that really, really is eating on me, is that Stone Middle School over there. I got pictures here, I wish I could flash them up there on that screen tonight. It's amazing what went on over there in the short length of time. Friday, Saturday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I mean, the city trucks was doing a great job, in a hurry, trying to hurry up and get it done. I thought, I thought the city Huntsville bought four acres, rented scripture about the first five acres of the building, with the building. The city bought the next four acres, and rented scripture already, already bought three acres for three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, so the school board tells me. And the city's over there tearing the building down. I, I can't get this all straight in my mind, but I want the taxpayers, that your money, your trucks, your gas, Miller and Miller, we rented their equipment, were nine-hundred thousand dollars in the hole, and overtime according to the budget. Of course, I'm the only one sitting in here on the budget night, the only citizen sitting here. One more minute. I want all the paperwork on Stone Middle School, as to who paid for that. I want it from the school board, don't know anything about it. I've never been over there, they're gonna look into it. I've got this contract, and it says on the front building, owner, City of Huntsville. I want to find out, I don't want to have to call in Channel forty-eight and nineteen to do an investigation. I'm trying to do one without all that, but I want some answers. Why City Huntsville used employees to tear down an individual's? I know you had an agreement, those are the agreements that I want. So there's more deals going on other than the school board. Thank you.
Ms. Reed, we'll get you the information that you want. I'll tell you what the best as I can when I know. The agreement is between the City of Huntsville and the city's school system, two governing bodies working together. We do stuff for them, they do stuff for us. Uh, but basically, the deal was for the city to demolish roughly ten to fifteen percent of Stone Middle School for the school system, and that's why it was done. So it was agreement between the two governing bodies. But we'll get you that other information that you want. Okay? Next, Jerry Cox, forty-twenty-nine Telstar Circle. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Clean, Jerry Cox, forty-twenty-nine Telstar Circle. First, as a veteran of the United States Army, I wish to respectfully acknowledge the three United States Army soldiers killed in the war in Afghanistan during the last two weeks. Mr. Clean, if I may, I wish to direct my comments tonight to the distinguished councilman from District Three, as I will not be able to attend his last council meeting. First, Colonel Osheski, thank you for your long distinguished service to our country, our country, wearing the United States Army uniform. Thank you for your service to the citizens of our city during the last four years. I find it ridiculous, Colonel, that you felt it necessary, or someone felt it necessary, for you to abstain from Huntsville utility items. It is even more ridiculous that this council has to approve Huntsville utility items, in that there are three appointed boards overseeing Huntsville utilities. On nine eleven, the meeting on nine eleven, this council authorized Huntsville utilities to purchase fire-resistant clothing for electric personnel. Did the council not trust the electric board that they appointed to make that decision? And you didn't vote for it, Colonel, you weren't able to vote for it, and you're probably the only one on the council that had any experience about fire-resistant clothing. We will now have a loss of diversity of experience on this council, that being military, perhaps for the first time. While before you, we had Councilwoman Moon, but I can assure you that she had military experience. Colonel, I appreciate the kindness and friendliness that you have at all times shown me, and I hope our paths continue to cross. Thank you, Mr. Clean.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Cox, if I could, I'd, had raised similar concerns about the Huntsville Utilities, or just asking questions about the process. I was told, uh, I don't know if they're still here, but I was told from the, um, the manager that this was something that was set out by state law through the state legislature, that there, there might be some changes that would take effect in the near future that would raise the threshold, but basically, this is something that we're doing in compliance with the state legislature action that was taken concerning, um, this legislative authority.
Mr. President, that is actually, that is absolutely correct. State law requires that any expenditure made by Huntsville Utilities for commodities or purchase of personal property or equipment in excess of twenty-five thousand be approved by the city council. And any ordinance change that affects their rates has to be approved by the city council. Otherwise, the boards would, would handle it, Mr. Cox.
Thank you, Mr. Joe Fion, City Attorney, for sharing that. Uh, there are no Huntsville utility items tonight, board appointments, uh, board appointments to be voted on. There's a resolution to appoint Lawrence R. Miller to the beautification board for a term to expire October first, two thousand seventeen. Uh, this was nominated at the September twenty-fifth meeting, uh, by Councilman Russell. Is there a motion?
Second. So moved. Second. We change it on you that one, I should move.
Okay, uh, Councilman Osheski made the motion, seconded by Councilman Culver. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has been approved. Next, approval of expenditures, uh, Councilman Culver.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, Clean. Um, motion to approve expenditures in the amount of ten million ninety-four thousand six hundred and ninety dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Councilman Osheski. All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion has been approved. Uh, going back up, board appointment nominations, uh, for the record, there's a nomination, uh, tonight to reappoint Mark Pogescos to the Human Relations Commission of the City of Huntsville. Term would expire September twenty-second, two thousand eighteen. Motion was, the nomination was made by myself.
Second?
No, it's just a nomination.
Okay.
Are there any other nominations from the floor? Okay, that has been entered for the record. Uh, communications from the mayor, Mayor Battle.
Mr. President, if we could digress for just a minute, sir?
Yes.
Uh, Finance Committee report.
Finance always comes before the mayor.
I guess so. Um, Mr. Taylor, you have the floor.
Yeah, just to have a brief report for you, councilmembers. Uh, since we last met, our fiscal year has closed and a new one has started. Uh, and we don't have much, uh, information. We do have a sales tax report, but we still have another month to go technically before we have all of our final figures for year-end. We do have sales tax for September. Uh, the number was one-point-three percent higher than September a year ago, so that's good. Still under our goal for last year, uh, but it did, since it's late in the year, it didn't influence the year-to-date very much. That stayed at about two, which is where it was at the end of August. So, uh, we're still kind of hanging right there at that two percent rate, which is good, because that's what we base this year's budget on, uh, for last year's finals. So, we have one more month to go, and we'll give you that update when we know it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mayor Battle?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, for the record, I'd like to appoint Harvey Cotton to the Tree Commission for a two-year term effective ten-nine-two thousand fourteen, and to expire on ten-eight-two thousand sixteen. Uh, this, this next week, there's a lot of community events happening, uh, that we'd like to encourage our citizens to come out to. Uh, the cemetery stroll is this Sunday from two to four-thirty at Maple Hill. It's free to the public. Uh, shuttle service will, uh, be from Jackson Way Baptist Church, and come enjoy the history, the characters of history, uh, that have always lived in Huntsville or have lived in the past in Huntsville, and you'll see them come back alive in front of you. Uh, you'll learn a lot about the history of Huntsville, and, um, it's a, it's a great event, and if you can come out, I encourage, encourage you to come out. Uh, the Big Picture Citizens Academy, uh, happens Tuesday, October fourteenth, from six o'clock at the Knight Center at Alabama A&amp;M, and the subject is neighborhood revitalization. We've sent out a number of notices throughout this community and want to encourage people to come out. Um, this is our big picture, when we start looking at the comprehensive plan, how do we affect neighborhoods? How do neighborhoods affect our community? How do we work with neighborhoods to, uh, produce a better community? Uh, and it will be a gr- great conversation. We look forward to seeing people there again. That's Tuesday night, uh, at Alabama A&amp;M, the Knight Center at six P.M. Uh, also, Healthy Huntsville, uh, will also be having their VIP walks, uh, during the month of October. We had one, uh, yesterday at Huntsville Hospital, and David Spiller led it. Uh, this next Wednesday is at Alabama A&amp;M. Uh, Dr. Hugh Guinea will be leading that one. Uh, the next week, we will be at Hudson Alpha, uh, and then the next week, we will be, uh, we're at John Hunt Park, and we will have animal services bringing out adoptable pets that can walk with us. So it will be a good time to, uh, walk with a pet that you might want to think about adopting and everything. Uh, and then finally, um, our, to the City of Huntsville employees, remember that we have our Employee Health Fair Wednesday at the J.C. Building? Uh, we do that so that we can save on, um, on our healthcare costs. We are self-insured on healthcare costs. It's a, it's a eighteen to twenty million dollar, um, bill every year that's paid by the taxpayers. And if we can get ahead on some of these healthy issues, do some preventative medicine, uh, we can keep from having to spend as much of that eighteen to twenty million dollars, and we can keep that healthcare cost down, and that keeps it down for the citizens. So, we encourage all the City of Huntsville employees to come to the, uh, Health Fair on Wednesday at the J.C. Building from, from ten to two. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Communications from councilmembers, Councilman Culver.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just a, kind of a follow-up to what, um, Councilman Showers has inquired about as it relates to, uh, property values, um, more specifically, um, in North Huntsville. Uh, we have noticed a decline in property value in terms of the assessments, and, uh, Mr. Hamilton, I believe you may have, uh, made some inquiries about that, if you would share that with us, please.
Councilman Culver, uh, Councilman Showers, uh, had a constituent call in, and, uh, he asked us to, to speak to her, so I actually spoke to her this evening. Uh, she was concerned about her, the, the tax assessment she received on her tax bill just within, I guess, the last few weeks. Uh, so first off, I'm gonna emphasize that, you know, the questions are really most appropriately answered by the tax assessor's office. Uh, they, they handle that process, so I'm not gonna attempt to, uh, to speak for them. But, uh, you know, he asked if we just take a look at her particular case and talk to her, uh, about what we saw there. And I think, you know, what we saw in her example i- is obviously there's other citizens that have concern, and it was the effective story on one of the news channels last night with a gentleman who had a similar concern. Um, you know, I have obviously not looked at every, you know, every property value throughout the city, but we have seen examples in other places, not only in Huntsville, but other places in Madison County also, where, uh, at this year, when the tax assessor reset their assessment, uh, they felt there were fairly steep declines in the value of their property on the tax assessment. So, first, I would, uh, encourage citizens that have any concerns about their particular tax assessment, they need to talk to the tax assessor's office, okay? And that's, that's where they can get the answers on their specific property. Uh, secondly, uh, the, the tax assessment does not automatically equal value if they were to resell their home. And so, you know, in fact, for, in this particular case, I was speaking to the citizen, we went out and, and pulled examples of homes that had sold within her neighborhood within the last few months, uh, and kind of did the comparison between what they had as tax assessment versus what the home actually sold for. And there is sometimes a fairly dramatic difference. So, you know, if, if a citizen is gonna sell their home, uh, if they engage with a, with a realtor, the realtor's going to help set the value of, an, an asking price on a home, which will not be based on the tax-assessed value. So, uh, you know, as citizens think about how they go about, uh, considering selling their home and the value of it, uh, the, the tax assessor's value is not where they should go to, for a, for an asking price on their home. There's a difference there, and I don't think everybody fully understands that. But in this particular case, as we looked at, uh, the value that the tax assessor had placed on, on this particular woman's home, it was not really out of line with her neighbors, and it was not out of line with the comparable sales prices that have occurred over the last twelve months in that neighborhood. Uh, there are parts of this city, and probably every city, where home values, uh, decline for a variety of reasons. There's a lot of things that go into the value of a home. Its size, you know, how well the neighborhood is maintained by the people that live there, you know, accessibility to retail, the school system, parks, I mean, there's all kinds of things that, that drive a value of a home. And so, uh, there's not one single answer that, that can provide for the entire city, or even a particular section of the city. You know, when we say Northwest Huntsville, that's a pretty large area, and, you know, there are a lot of unique neighborhoods throughout Northwest Huntsville, and they're each gonna be impacted differently, uh, by those various factors. So, uh, I would encourage citizens to contact the tax assessor's office if they have concerns about the particular, uh, assessment, the appraisal of their home, uh, and they, their individual concerns can be addressed. You know, a bigger picture, uh, you know, to play on words with the, the comp plan, that's specifically some of the things we're looking at, and this next Citizens Academy, uh, will specifically look at issues that impact the value of homes in particular neighborhoods, and how we, the city, can influence that, how the citizens that live there can influence it, uh, and other entities throughout the community. There's not one single entity in any city that fully impacts the value of a, a particular home or a neighborhood. And so, uh, I would encourage folks that have concerns about that to come to that Citizens Academy. One, they can learn, uh, through what, some of the things that actually affect the value of their homes, but then also, they can contribute to the dialogue on what they want to see happen in their neighborhood and around their neighborhood to, to bring values back.
Absolutely. Thank, thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Culver. Councilman Osheski.
First of all, I'd, uh, like to thank Jerry for kind words. Uh, you know, there's something he said about Brother Jerry, and that is, uh, he, uh, calls the good and he calls the bad, and when the bad's taken care of, he says, "Thank you." And that, that's all, that's all you can ask for. So I appreciate your kind words. Second of all, um, last week I had a, what I thought was a, some chest pain, and, uh, well, it is chest pain, and I thought I was having a little heart attack or something, so I went to Huntsville Hospital. And I just walked in there, and it's just John Osheski, they had no clue who the heck I was, and I, I was totally, totally impressed with the way that Huntsville Hospital's emergency room operates. Now, in fairness, I walked in there at about ten o'clock in the morning, so I didn't hit it in the middle of the night, and I probably, if I'm gonna pick to run, that's probably the right time, it was ten o'clock in the morning. But, uh, it was an emergency room that was spectacular, that, uh, they know how to deal with it, they did every test, and I got nothing but praise for Huntsville Hospital and the way they took care of me, and it wasn't heart-related, uh, and they're gonna do more tests. But nevertheless, I just wanted to praise Huntsville Hospital for taking to me. And I know everybody makes mistakes, and I know there's issues everywhere, but I just wanted to share the good of something, and, uh, and if there was something bad, I'd call it out too, but, uh, I, I had real, real well with them. I, uh, you know, I got to go out and visit Remington today and see the, the, um, what they're doing out there, and it's, it's pretty spectacular, actually. It's an environment, uh, a business that's running very well and is picking up steam, and real proud to have them as part of our, as part of our, our community. Uh, I'm not sure how many of y'all realize this, I only know this because my other life that I worked, that this was Customer Service Appreciation Week, and not, not a thanking the customer, but thanking the people who take care of the customers. And, uh, I wa- I thought about it before I came in here today, and I said, "That's all the city does, is customer service." And they take, and it's called constituent service, but bottom line- And they take, and it's called constituent service, but bottom line, that's what they do. And I want to thank you all for what you do, because I wish I'd tracked this over my four years of how many calls I get a week, a month. My numbers have doubled, tripled in the last two months. It's been amazing. I'm getting ready to go out, and I'm getting more calls on issues that I've been able to actually help them through the Hatfields and the Police Department and the, and Jim McGuffey's and, and all, and, you know, all those great Americans out there that take care of business. I'll share with you, I can't count for, I mean, I'm assuming my brothers do the same thing up here, but, you know, you get a call, you get a phone call, and you try your best to fix the call, you try your best to fix it, and some things you can fix and some things you can't. I mean, I spent almost two years trying to get a restaurant to have music inside of a wall, you know, inside the building without no noise going out of it. Two years. I felt strongly about it. Well, I got help from my brother lawyer over there and got some city ordinance and stuff written up, and he's playing his music. Now, he's asking me to chase something else, and I'm going to see Michelle Jordan about that now here. This week is one of my outgoing events here, but nevertheless, I just appreciate that, and I appreciate the responsiveness of this great team that the mayor has, and I pray that they are as responsive to constituents as they are to me. That's all I got.
John, I'm sorry, I didn't tell you, but we forwarded our phones to your line.
Mr. Osheski, I'm familiar with the restaurant issue. The gentleman contacted me, and I think he has a valid argument, and I believe it would be something I could support if you can get it worked out. I think he's already been through the process, and seems like all the problems have been addressed. Couple of things I'd like to bring up myself. Last week has certainly been some good things that have been going on in the community that I've enjoyed participating in. The Citywide Community Watch Awards Ceremony was held last Tuesday night, and at that meeting, it was announced that Community Watch now has 200 chapters here in the city of Huntsville. And if you think about, you know, and I've said it before, the tens of thousands of man-hours of volunteers that we have from all these 200 chapters, working with the Police Department, the work that is being done to help neighborhoods. We do have challenges in some of our neighborhoods that certainly has been brought up, but there's been a lot of good things that have been done, and the members of the Community Watch chapters participate, I think are certainly exemplary and to be commended. Also, I was able to join the fire chief and the mayor at the ribbon-cutting ceremony for Fire Station Number Six. I think it's got a great facility, and it's going to be providing a great service and good response times. I think it's going to be a good thing to have, and new construction taking place in that area, I think is certainly a positive for the western part of Drake Avenue, and really, really think that's going to be a great positive. Last Saturday, Triana Village had their community festival, and the, there was over 600 people who were participating, and I think that's a great neighborhood activity, and the leadership that worked on that, including Kimberly Battle, I think are to be commended for the great work that they have done. I've seen their emails for the last three months, and I know they've been working real hard on it. It was a great, great event, big turnout. And this Saturday morning, I'm looking forward to getting up and going out to join the folks at Bailey Patton Estates Neighborhood. They're going to be having a neighborhood cleanup, and Joy McKee has promised there'll be coffee and donuts there, and a lot of good people are going to be out there, and looking forward to working with them and visiting and cleaning up at the same time. That's all I have. Next on the agenda is unfinished business items for action. 13A, ordinance number 14725, annexing land lying on the west side of Zert Road and on the east side of Arnett Road. This was introduced at the September 25th regular council meeting. Is there a motion? Okay, before we do, let me back up and turn it over to the Planning Department, then we'll take your motion.
Ashley Nichols, Planning Division. This proposed annexation is approximately 3.19 acres. It's located west of Zert and on the east side of Arnett Road. This property is currently vacant land, and the proposed annexation is for an additional phase of the currently existing subdivision located to the east, the Cambridge subdivision.
Is there any, well, let's go ahead and put it on the floor first. Motion by Councilman Culver, the chair will second. Discussion from the council. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion has been approved. Thank you. Next, ordinance number 14726, amending Article II, Sections 936, 944, and 950 of Chapter Nine, Cemeteries of the Code of Ordinances. This was introduced at the September 25th meeting of the City Council. Is there somebody here from the Cemetery Department?
Mr. Kling, I think I'm here to speak in Joy McKee's absence. Did you get a motion on the floor? Members of the council, it's been many, many years since there's been any adjustment in the fees charged at the Cemetery Department, and this ordinance seeks to do just that, to bring the fees charged by the City of Huntsville Cemetery Department more in line with the prevailing rates around the southeast. With these changes, it would still put Huntsville in about the middle of the pack with regard to rates, still not the lowest, but not anywhere close to the highest, but at a rate that pretty much covers our cost of service. Right now, we're losing money by providing the service for a cost that is less than what it actually cost us.
Any questions, comments from the council? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Joffreyon, that is kind of consistent with the cost in other areas. Did I not hear that correctly?
That's correct, and as I mentioned, it's about in the middle of the pack with regard to the same types of fees in other jurisdictions in the southeast.
Thank you, sir.
How would the fees compare to private cemetery services in this community?
In this community?
Yep.
Well, those services are no longer being, well, you mean with Valhalla and other?
Yeah.
Less than some and comparable to others.
Okay, still less and comparable.
Yes, sir.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion has been approved. 14A, new business items for introduction, introduction of an ordinance to amend ordinance 8979, classification and salary plan ordinance. Item 15, new business items for consideration or action. Are there any items that council members wish to have held? Okay. 15A has been deleted. 15B, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a cost reimbursement agreement between the City of Huntsville and Northeast Alabama Traffic Safety Office in the amount of $7,000 for traffic enforcement duties. C, ordinance amending budget ordinance 14665 by changing the authorized strength of the various departments. D, ordinance amending budget ordinance 14665 by changing the appropriated funding for various departments and funds. 15E, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a special employment agreement between the City of Huntsville and Edith Mays. F, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement between, with the low bidders meeting specifications as authorized in the attached summary of bids for acceptance. G, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Reed Contracting Services, Inc., the low bidder for Highway 431, Turn Lane Improvements, Project Number 6514-T102. 15H, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement between the City of Huntsville and the Alabama Department of Transportation for cooperative maintenance of right-of-way for the slotted drain pipe along U.S. Highway 72 from milepost 97, 90.73 to milepost 90.73, Project Number 6514-T104. I'm going to assume that item H is not a typo? If there is, we'll make corrections later. 15I, resolution authorizing the mayor to do, execute modification number three to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and Forsight Incorporated for engineering design services for downtown Gateway Project Number 6511-RDO3. 15J, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Johnson and Associates Consulting Engineers, LLC, for engineering design services for Dunlop Boulevard Drainage Improvements, Project Number 6514-DM30. K, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Garver, LLC, for engineering design services for Governor's West Roadway Improvements, Project Number 6514-RD12. 15L, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Garver, LLC, for engineering design services for alternate access to Redstone Arsenal at Resolute Way, Project Number 6514-RD13. 15M, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Johnson and Associates Consulting Engineers, LLC, for engineering design services for Dynetics Park in Cummings Research Park, Project Number 6514-SP61. 15N, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute modification number one to the agreement with Garver, LLC, for engineering design services for Forest Main Relocation Project, I-565 and Counterline Road Interchange Modification, ALDOT, Project Number IMD-1065307, and the City of Huntsville, Project Number 6512-SMO1. O, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Thickeall Construction Company, Inc., for construction services for the new restroom for Public Transit Transfer Station located at 500 Church Street. 15P, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one and final to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and Pierce Construction Company, Inc., for Fire Station Number Six located at 2810 Drake Avenue. 15Q, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract between the City of Huntsville and Clarkston Square LP for the use of 385,000 in-home funds for the construction of 56-unit Clarkston Square Senior Apartments located on Meadowbrook Drive in Huntsville. 15R, resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle the workman's compensation claim of Michael Morrison. S, resolution for the rectal license agreement between the City of Huntsville and JJ Huntsville Downtown, LLC. 15T, resolution concerning the assignment of franchise and the transfer of control of franchise from Cass Corporation to Midwest Cable, Inc. U, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a temporary lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and the National Children's Advocacy Center, Inc., for the Fifth Annual Rocket City Chili Cook-Off. 15V, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Capital Edge Strategies, LLC. W, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter a special employee agreement between the City of Huntsville and Phyllis J. Smith. X, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter a special employee agreement between the City of Huntsville and Joyce Douglas. 15Y, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the renewal agreement between the City of Huntsville and Blue Cross Blue Shield of Alabama for group health insurance administrative 15Z, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter a memorandum of understanding between the City of Huntsville and North Alabama Search Dog Association to provide resources to assist Huntsville Fire and Rescue in locating missed and lost persons. 15AA, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement between the City of Huntsville doing business as the Huntsville Madison County Emergency Management Agency and the Tennessee Valley Authority. 15BB, resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke First Commercial Bank Letter of Credit Number 1052 for Grand Lake Subdivision. 15CC has been deleted. 15DD, resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke Bank South Letter of Credit Number 362000788828 for Legendwood Pass, Legendwood Phase Three subdivision. 15EE, resolution of the City Council regarding appointments of the Board of Directors of the Huntsville Madison County Railroad Authority. Double F, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a confidentiality and nondisclosure agreement between the City of Huntsville and Blue Cross Blue Shield of Alabama, and beneficuous for the purpose of analyzing claims data and eligibility. Is there a motion for consolidation and approval of Items 15A through 15FF? Motion made by Councilman Culver, seconded by Councilman Osheski. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? The motion has been approved. Next, under Item 16, we have vacation of easements. 16A1 has been deleted. 16A2, ordinance authorizing the vacation of five-foot utility and drainage easements, Lot 34 Hampton Cove Estates. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Culver, seconded by Councilman Osheski. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion has been approved. Ordinance authorizing the vacation of utility and drainage easements, Track 34, Inspiration on Green Mountain. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Culver, seconded by Councilman Osheski. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion has been approved. 16B1A1, excuse me, 16B1A, resolution consenting to the vacation of right-of-way along Cecil Ashburn Drive, Legacy at Jones Farm. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Culver, seconded by Councilman Osheski. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion has been approved. Next, 16B1B, ordinance authorizing the vacation of right-of-way along Cecil Ashburn Drive, Legacy at Jones Farm. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Culver, seconded by Councilman Osheski. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Motion has been approved. There are no deeds for acceptance nor routine bond satisfactions nor liquor bond mortgages. We're now at non-roster communications from the public. Ms. Reed?
Well, I just want to make a statement about the Huntsville Utilities. When you get your utility bill, the dates can change within five days of this month's and last month's bill, and I was in the utilities the other day, and many people have those little pink slips of telling you that tomorrow or the next day, your utilities will be cut off. Now, those little pink slips that they put on your door is a $40 fee. You don't want that $40 fee added to your utility bill. Some people asked me to bring this up, but a lot of people don't know, your utility bill is not the same every month, the same date. So I just would like to notify the public to be aware when you get that bill. Do something about it, either call and extend it. Don't let them come out there and put a pink slip on your door and I'll, $40 more. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? Reverend Johnson?
TC Johnson, 1800 Sparkwind Drive. Since we're talking about Huntsville Utility, that's an issue, Mayor, because normally it's at $40. Normally, that $40 is penalizing people who otherwise can't even afford it, who are trading food stamps and whatever. If they turn it off, it becomes $130 attached to that bill, and we're talking about the citizen who are struggling already. The utilities wouldn't be offered. I've talked to the Huntsville Utilities about this, don't know whether it's going to change. $130 to leave from downtown, to go somewhere in the city, to reconnect. My question would be, is Huntsville Utilities owned by the city? And if that is true, does it mean it's owned by taxpayers? If that's true, then those we have on the board should be able to represent the taxpayers in these issues. A lot of my research have come up with information, it costs about $15 to keep the property that you own, electricity just coming to it and water. You don't have to use it at all. You pay that amount of money. If you multiply that time, kind of money, time the number of citizens that use it, you come up with enough money to pay all of Huntsville Utilities self. pay all of Huntsville Utilities' salary, all of it, just by having it connected. And so, if it's owned by the city, then our council people should know what's happening in the utilities. Now, if it's not, everything I say is null and void. If it's the taxpayers, then we elect the council and the mayor to help us control what's happening with the finances coming into that entity. And I wonder, has our council ever looked at the budget, ever audited Huntsville Utilities? And those are the kind, because if it's owned, just if it's owned by the city, and means that it's owned by the taxpayers, then there's an important job that the council has. I agree, some things are ridiculous, Mr. Jerry, but there are other things, like just asking for increase to build a water thing, and when the water thing is built, the increase doesn't go away on the citizen. That's another issue. Let me just get to this tax thing, because I had something I wanted to say about that, if I can read it. Property values drop when the taxes you pay are not used to reinvest in the community where you live, bottom of the land. When our governance gets the taxes, it gets it from all neighborhoods. It seems to me, just me now, that in this city, it invests the taxes in only some of the neighborhoods. Now, I need the question, this question answered. Is Huntsville Utilities owned by the taxpayers of this city? Can somebody answer that for me?
Mr. President, Pastor Johnson, the Huntsville Utilities is a public utility, and although it's officially titled in the name of the City of Huntsville, the City Council has very limited authority with regard to Huntsville Utilities. There are three boards that operate Huntsville Utilities. They have a water board, a gas board, and an electric utility board. Those three boards govern the operations of Huntsville Utilities with three exceptions. Approval of rate changes, approval of expenditures in excess of $25,000, and appointment of board members. City Council appoints all board members to that entity. Outside of those three issues, though, the City Council has no official control. May have some persuasive authority, but no official control.
Reverend Johnson, piggybacking on what Mr. Joffreyon said, this was a good night, I guess, but I met before the council meeting with the manager of Huntsville Utilities. We have good communication. And I think there are a couple of things that you had raised that can certainly be communicated to them. We do get calls and complaints and concerns about Huntsville Utilities. I have good contact with the manager, and also with the person who is in charge of customer services, who's a good contact. And I think they would listen, and I think they would be concerned and interested in following up and hearing what we have to say. So, it'll get relayed to them in a short, and, yes, sir. Red?
Thank you again, Mr. Presiding Officer, and City Council for allowing us to have opportunity to speak. As we know, that it's not really granted that much at the school board. While speaking of the school board, I want to piggyback with what Ms. Jackie mentioned about our councilman leaving out. I'm a little worried about what's coming in to replace you. So, I do, too, want to thank you for your service. A long time ago, you spoke to me about collaborating on getting some things done. And so, right now, I want to take a moment and have a Turn Back Thursday to try and remind you of that time, and to let you know that this information that is going to be sent before you in the upcoming week is an opportunity as well to show some serious collaboration between both sides of this community. This information will also be sent to Chief Morris, Captain Malone, Ms. Jones, Mr. Hamilton, and several other members of the administration. And I ask that you would seriously take a moment to review this information, so that we can give a reason for our mayor to get behind this. I feel Mayor Battle has a strong heart for the city, as well. I feel that he has strong intentions to make the city grow and become one of the leading forces in the southeast district. But what I want the city itself to, what we must realize is this, if we cannot do it cohesively, it's not going to move. Regardless of what we may have as our own personal agenda, our own ideas to make things a certain way, if we cannot work collectively as a group, it is not going to move forward. It may work temporarily, sure enough, because one thing that controls our country is money. So, when you have the funds to do things, it's that much easier to get it done. But eventually, those things are going to run out. Those things are going to deplete. Those things are going to replenish. And if we have not created a constructive plan that is going to look towards the future of all people, particularly our young, our youngest citizens, it's not worth it. So, again, I want to urge these people, as you receive this documentation, to look heavily into this, and understand that we must be able to work on our cohesive front, because when we move in harmony, we can dilute any forms of discord. Thank you again for the opportunity for us to speak, and there's nothing but love for the city of Huntsville.
Anybody else wish to speak? Is there a motion for adjournment? We're adjourned.